It's six o'clock and I'm calling the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of April 13th, 2024 to order. May we begin with a roll call? Present. Here. Present. Present.
Here.
Here. Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse this?
A motion to excuse the members that are absent.
Second.
We have a motion, a second by Commissioner Portillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the consider approval minutes of the regular meeting of April 4th, 2024.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Do we have any citizens, general citizen comments? Going to open up public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance moving to item 6A. Amending the zoning ordinance map to Cielo Rado by authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for a bar on lots one and two, block three, Calady Heights subdivision, unit three, and on lot three, block three, Calady Heights subdivision, unit two, located at 3902, 3910, and 3920 East Del Mar Boulevard, respectively, suites 109, 110, and outdoor patio only.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant SKG KHP LLC is the owner. CMR Investments Group LLC is the applicant. Roberto Castellana Jr. is the representative of the property. Descriptions on lots one and two, block three, Calady Heights subdivision, unit three, and on lot three, block three, Calady Heights subdivision, unit two, located at 3902, 3910, and 3920 East Del Mar Boulevard, respectively, suites 109, 110, and the outdoor patio only. The sought change request is conditional use permit. The proposed use is a bar. Letter sent for 59, four, zero, against two. Location view. Arrow view. Street view. Sought change signage. Zoning overview. Feature lanius. Staff recommendation, staff does not support the proposed conditional use permit. Continuation. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Roberto Castellana Jr.
This is Sesta Martinez and Dr. Mateo Reyes.
We are part of CMR Investment Group that is actually going to be putting the bar forward, you know, at this location. I want to first thank Laura for helping me with the process of the application. The staff has been very helpful. I want to thank Mr. Arvista and the committee for allowing us this opportunity to speak and give them a description of what we're trying to do with the bar. So I want to first address that I understand some of the hesitations related to some of the two sightings that, or the two recommendations of the reasons why it was denied. But I would like to give a little, I guess, description of what the bar is, you know, and what our vision is of community with indulgence. So Sesta Martinez, or Cheese Martinez, as Cheese, as everybody kind of knows him here in Laredo, is a well-known mixologist in Laredo, or bartender. And he, along with Dr. Mateo Reyes and myself, have had this vision about putting together a bar. But more specifically, more lounge. We do have some reservations of the use of the word "bar" for this, as this project, because it's not really what we intended. What we're looking for is actually putting together a location that is convenient to having a social environment that allows not only for the, our taking the vibration and food, but also to have active conversation. So not to say my, reveal my age, but we're at an age where we like to have a meeting or a sit-down with colleagues, with friends, with family, or we can actually have a conversation and enjoy certain beverages as well. So the ambiance that we're looking at bringing here is not a club vibe. That is not what we want. We're not looking to pump loud music so that it is disturbing not only to the neighbors and the residents that are in the area, but more importantly, we want it to not disturb our patrons. We want them to be able to have that active conversation and really, in essence, be able to discuss the difference in our mixology, our drinks, and what we're providing along with our food, and be able to have that conversation of how they are enjoying all aspects of our facility. So one of the things that we'd also like to do is be able to provide our patrons with some live music in some cases, but that's going to be acoustic music. That's going to be more on a lower tone music if it's inside or it's going to be outside. So that's the intent of what we're trying to do. We do have our hours of operation starting at 4:00 p.m. and extending to 12:00 p.m. on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. We're looking to extend it to 2:00 a.m. We have done quite a bit of extensive work talking to TABC as well. And like I mentioned, I've talked to the staff at the Polonia Zoning Committee as well. And in order to be completely transparent, we didn't initially start with a special use permit as a restaurant serving alcohol. But when we started talking about where the potential revenues argument lie and what it might look like, we believe that it's best to disclose everything upfront. And that was one of my questions at the very beginning was, well, did we get to a point where our alcohol sales actually oversee, surpass the food sales, then what is the potential ramifications at that point? And that's where we talked about a potential audit and reviewing this or that, even though with TABC, that threshold is 60/40, 60 alcohol and 40 food. I understand that the ordinance is 50/50. And so when we discussed that, we thought it was in our best interest to go ahead and ask for a conditional use permit versus a special use permit and not try to circumvent any of the process whatsoever. So that's our intent of it. I'm sure Cheese might want to say a few words.
So for those of you who don't know me, everybody calls me Cheese. Very few call me by my... Okay. So for those of you who don't know me, everybody calls me Cheese, but my name is Sesta Martinez. And it's been probably a lifelong dream of mine to own a bar. Yes, we're categorized under bar, but to elaborate on what we really want is an intimate cocktail space to provide Laredo with the ambiance that is not being done. Elevated cocktails with elevated bites to kind of encourage people to socialize again. We don't plan on doing the typical four dollar, you call it. We want to encourage our guests to drink in a more responsible manner. And by that, I've been educated from traveling through bartending. I've taken part in the best bartending program in the world alongside some of the best bartenders in the world. And with this education that I've gotten from traveling and taking part in conferences, I want to bring that to our city. I want to get past our cultural threshold of people wanting to get drunk in a matter of hours because, I mean, that's what everybody does at family get-togethers. Everybody wants to drink as much as they can. So, you know, with our establishment with Bear Hug, I want to educate our guests on what they're drinking and how to actually enjoy a cocktail. We also plan on having non-alcoholic cocktails, or zero proof cocktails as they're referred to now, for guests who don't drink, to invite them as well to socialize in a, you know, low music ambiance and even low ABV cocktails for those who don't drink a lot but want something to sip on. Through the education I've gotten, we hope that we can provide something very different for Laredo and, you know, maybe put Laredo on the map with something new. That's the vision that we have. Not loud music. More of us sit down and enjoy themselves. I understand the patio is a concern. We do plan on building an eight-foot wall to, you know, provide some of the, you know, privacy for the residents behind us. There'll be a wall facing them and facing our neighbors, Laredo Brewing, and that's to contain whatever noise from our guests that may be outside smoking or listening to light ambient music outside. But we definitely don't want to go for a loud crowd. Our prices won't be as affordable as others, but they will be affordable for the average working person. And that's all I really have for y'all. Thank you.
My name's Mateo Reyes and I'm a family doctor here in town. And as an investor in this business, I'm coming forward with, of course, being a responsible citizen in our community and not creating any chaos or disruption or promoting any bad behavior for our community. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm supporting this investment simply because I know these people very well and I think we're all responsible adults that can pretty much be able to manage and control this type of environment.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from the commission or for staff? Go ahead.
Can we hear from staff a little bit on the two letters that were opposed?
Yes, we did receive two. As the presentation indicated, we sent out approximately...
Fifty-nine?
Fifty-nine letters, and we did receive two in opposition. One was from the school district who were very concerned, and they were strongly opposed. And the resident, there was a resident that also was concerned with noise issues.
I have a question for staff. One of the comments here is that they don't have enough parking spaces to suffice the need. However, if they remove the time from four to five, then that would give them enough parking space that they would need at that point?
Yeah, as we indicated in our, in our staff report, we did, our calculations indicated that the proposed site would need an additional 71 spaces to accommodate the proposed use as well as all of the existing uses. And what we did is went ahead and took a look at all of the hours of operation and see which we could eliminate through overlap. And we, if we were to, if they were to move their hours from instead of opening at four to open at five, they wouldn't overlap with a number of uses which would give them an extra 68 spaces. So while not exactly 71, it would get them much closer to compliance.
Can I elaborate on that or can I respond to that? Is that possible?
Sure.
And I understand that concern as well. So with four o'clock, we don't anticipate our peak hours to be at four o'clock. We actually anticipate our peak hours to be somewhere around seven to eight o'clock at night. So we understand that even with our staffing, we are going to bring them in with the demand. So we're going to have limited staffing at the very beginning at four o'clock. We'll actually start tripling them closer to three o'clock. And then as we support the expected volume comes seven, eight o'clock, then they'll be coming in to support that as well. So, and I've been there a few times, several times actually, you know, between those hours to make sure that, you know, the site is cleared and we're able to move forward with potential leaks. And I've never encountered any difficulties getting spots or seeing, having vacant parking spaces during the hours of anywhere from three to six o'clock. Just wanted to add. We are willing to make that change if it's repudiate. But we would like to kind of be able to keep that so that we can continue to build up as according to our plan. But we are, we're willing to make that concession as well.
Real quick question. So you will, you could be looking at moving until five o'clock.
We could.
Parking to me, who's out at four o'clock drinking? This is kind of... But the more, the school still, the school is still on at four o'clock. Five o'clock, school's out. I feel, I personally feel more comfortable. You know what? An hour is an hour. Nobody's... That's the only concern I have for that area.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for, for the applicants. Have you reviewed all of the conditions that staff has placed in there should we decide to approve this? And are you comfortable with all of those, including this issue of opening at five?
Yes, we've reviewed everything. A lot of those things are covered in the lease agreement, you know, as far as being compliant with some of the city ordinances and everything. So we don't really have an issue with any of that. The one thing that we would like to continue to keep is, is have some kind of ambiance outside of the patio, you know. Our goal is not really just to necessarily have a place where people can go outside and smoke, but actually during some nice hours, especially like today, be able to enjoy outside with some ambient music.
But not loud music.
But not loud.
Well, that's one of the conditions stated about.
Mr. Chairman, yes, for staff, what is the threshold for decibel noise that is considered a nuisance?
Do you remember what it is?
Where is the police department going to show up?
Fifty-five decibels is the level for...
So can we include that in there? Do you all have that as a mechanism to monitor that? Again, they need to keep it at that level if they're going to have outdoor music. Because I think that's what you're asking for, is that you want to contain, be able to have the outdoor music, but contain it to a respectable level.
And we're also open to like after certain hours. I'm very respectful and we all are respectful of the residents out behind it. That's something that we have noticed and we're, actually, we were in the process of informing all of those residents as well. We had a list according to the TABC until they told us that we didn't have to do it. We had a list and we were all enabled to go. And with an explanation that if you ever feel that we are going beyond into out, here's a contact number so you can reach us and let us know. We are going to be very cognizant as far as what they are experiencing, and we don't want that. So we don't want them to be disturbed by anything. So if you want to potentially put in that we need to lower that decibel at a certain hour of the day, no. But at 10 o'clock, we'd be happy to oblige.
I'm glad that you're thinking about the neighborhood. I feel comfortable if that's actually on there because we, they don't have to call if you're following that rule because it would be loud.
Yeah, at that point, it would be a code enforcement issue and of course, they would be in charge of enforcing that. Are there any other questions? I did have one more for staff. So are there any other conditional use permits for bars serving alcohol, beer, wine, alcohol from Winfield Parkway, Alzender Parkway to the Loop? That's a short stretch in terms of commercial business. On a hundred-foot right-of-way right now, eighty where they are now, eventually it's going to be a hundred. I know some development's going to be taking place to the south side of Del Mar, so it'll go back to being a hundred-foot right-of-way all the way through. And I just want to know if there are any other conditional use permits that have been issued in the last five years, three years?
I wouldn't have that with me. I apologize. All I can tell you is that we do have...
Serving beer, wine, and alcohol.
We do have the three special use permits on site that are currently under rating.
So we already have some two in the...
Yes, we have three special permits on site.
Just one serving alcohol.
So this is, this would be the only bar in the entire plaza also in Winfield. The other businesses are restaurants.
Restaurant bars.
So just as like a consideration, like this is, even though this is an upscale lounge, it is at the end of the day a bar adjacent, exactly like just a budding residential homes and next to a school. And the school has been vocal about being opposed to this. So we do have to look at it, think about it a little bit differently because it's not a restaurant serving alcohol. It is, it would be a bar.
May I respond to that?
You may. Mr. Chairman, yes.
I don't see how that's any different. Alcohol is alcohol. Whether I drink it at your establishment, the establishment next door, or the 10 others that are down the road, what difference does it make? If I walk out intoxicated, you're liable. Anything that happened because of the alcohol, regardless of what happens at a restaurant or strictly a bar, or the neighbors who's drinking at a company outside till four o'clock in the morning, those same liabilities exist. So I'm not concerned about that. My concern is for the school opening early and having those folks in that area at that hour. By the time they leave your establishment, school will be closed, and those are enforcement issues. But again, my question was whether or not there was already alcohol being served, not just beer and wine, but alcohol being served in those areas because this is going to be a continuation of that. You're going to continue to have, again, I said it before in my last meeting, that there are places that are a hundred-foot right-of-way. Where else do you put these? You don't want them to be ones. You don't want them to be threes that are adjacent to neighborhoods inside on a 60-foot back-to-back. This is a hundred-foot right-of-way. This eventually will look like Calton Road, Clark, Highway 83 South. It'll look like all of those eventually because of the size of the road. And you can already see the overlay district that's being done on Lindenwood back to Candle, not Candlewood, but Broadcrest. That overlay that you're thinking about is going to attract these types of businesses to that area. So it's just a change in dynamic of that roadway. That's just my, my opinion of it.
And just to add to that, so I think there are areas in Laredo where we have B3s that are not adjacent to homes. So sometimes we have like some park space, some right-of-way between homes and businesses. And then in this case specifically, we don't have that. The homes are actually pretty much right up next to where the business would be and the outdoor space would be. So it's something to keep in mind to protect the residents who purchased homes there. And the noise nuisance ordinance is in place, but it's still, even within the ordinance, you can still have vibrations hitting those homes. So it's something to really be cautious about because of that outdoor space. And I know you guys, your business would really require the outdoor space. So I think it's something to really be cautious about. And then again, the school district is reaching out to us saying like, hey, we don't want this. We don't want specifically a bar. So we have to think about that as well as the school districts are, you know, they're telling us something.
So I think, if I may, what protects the constituents and protects the investors here is the conditional use permit. They do have a different concept. It's totally different from what, you know, we normally see here in Laredo. So, you know, one person can say something and then not follow through. However, with this conditional use permit, they have the conditions where they have to, you know, meet and oblige. So I think that in a way protects the constituents and at the same time protects the investors to kind of keep them on task. So that's just sort of, you know, what I was thinking and what I've been hearing. You know, Laredo does need something different, something upscale, something different that, you know, it's just not from your typical, you know, sports bars or bars. So that's all I have to say. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
So I guess just the last.
I'm sorry. Just a clarification. Those three establishments, Korea BBQ Place, Laredo Brewing, and Santa Barra all serve liquor, not just beer and wine?
Yes. And they are all operating the special use permit. That's what it says.
And they are operating, serving alcohol from what time to what time?
Oh, I don't know that we, did we attach all the special use permits?
They're open for lunch.
Hold on, hold on. I have, I do have that here. Hold on.
I don't think they don't have liquor. I think somehow...
Santa Barra does serve liquor. It's still open until 2:00 a.m.
Laredo Brewing Company, the hours are 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
That's right.
And Santa Barra is 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. And what was the other one? The barbecue place?
That, that should be open from 12:00 p.m. or 10:00 p.m.
Three, oh, four. Let's get on.
Three, oh, four. Oh, here it is. 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Yeah, no, stay up until two. This is the only place I would stay up until two.
Anything else?
So last one, what our chairman just mentioned is that staff is suggesting all of these conditions, including prohibiting outdoor music. So is that something that you guys would agree to? I know you mentioned it's kind of central to your concept, but if that's what staff is recommending to us, the school district and residents seem to have, some of them were opposed. Is that something you would agree with to not have outdoor music? And if not, would you consider enclosing your outdoor patio somehow?
There are certain things that we can do according to, because we're not the landlords, so we're only tenants. And so we are allowed to put up an eight-foot wall, which is, was our intent to be able to put up an eight-foot wall. That is going to separate...
I think we talked about the, we talked about the noise and that we would put that piece in to change it. So they can't play music, but to a certain, to a certain...
But in the conditional use permit, you talk about no music at all.
That's right. Yeah.
So we would ask, if, if the motion is made, then I would, I would want to have at least that stricken, but added with the decibel level.
The decibel levels are already considered with the city's noise nuisance ordinance.
Let's be specific and make sure that it's on there. So that becomes more of a code enforcement issue, not the police department having to show up and do those kind of things.
If it's off-hours, the police are going to show up.
Police will show up anyways?
Yeah.
Are there any other questions so we can move on?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak against this item?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ruben Ayala. I'm the Safety and Crisis Response Manager for United Independent School District. We are in opposition to this permit due to the safety and security of our students, especially Alexander High School. Thank you.
Are there any questions? You say, I don't want to specify your concerns.
So there are several. Just to clarify a little bit of what was being discussed earlier. Our dismissal may be at four o'clock, but in reality, the school doesn't stop. So we have basketball games, we have football games, we have practices. We have parents, students, and staff arriving from out-of-town trips, academic trips. So there will be constant traffic in and out of that campus. Also, it is a bar, so how you want to consider it, whether it be a restaurant or a bar, they will only be, and the majority of their cell will be alcohol. And so in other areas, and it's been coming out in the news where there have been weapons being shot, students, other patrons being shot. And that is something we want to keep away from our campus, as well as just the advertising and just everything to making it accessible to our students. And that is, those are specifically some of our areas of concern.
But this is Alexander High School, right?
Yes.
And the ages?
So you've got anything from a 15-year-old to an 18-year-old?
Well, they shouldn't be in a bar, right?
They shouldn't, but, and so, and just to kind of, to compare, so recently, the zoning has changed for vape shops to not be next to school. And so that was a reactive response. And so this is, I'm hoping it would be proactive and not having something that comes out later on that we're going to have to change, and it'll be too little, too late.
Are there any questions? Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. The two most recent permits were issued in '21 and '22.
That's correct.
Was there opposition from the school then for those that were going to serve alcohol?
I just don't have that information.
And that's special for both of you.
I wouldn't have that information myself. That's my role.
Were additional permits issued further down the street closer to Winfield, Alexander? Those were issued in '22 and '20. Republic moved over from Shiloh to Winfield. Was there opposition then for those, again, serving alcohol?
That, again, I don't, my role, I've taken this past two years, and so I don't, I don't have those, that information.
Do you know if the school district would be opposed to a restaurant serving alcohol in the same location versus a bar?
I, again, I was asked to speak regarding the specific location, and so the opposition is to a, specifically a bar.
A bar, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else who wishes to speak, speak in favor or against?
May I speak?
No, you already did the speaking, so we just kind of have to go. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and then open up for discussion.
I close, you already closed it? I make a motion to go with the conditional use permit.
Close the public hearing and open for discussion. Motion to close. Sorry. You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Now we can open for discussion on the second.
Now it's a motion to close, and, oh, you already did that.
You already did.
I'm sorry, I've had a long day. A motion to, to go with the recommendation of this is a conditional use permit with the clause of the noise to be at a, what was it?
The 50°.
I do recommend approval.
Right, approval.
Recommend approval.
So you're going to, you're going to change the condition that you have number nine to some...
Number nine only, yes.
But you're going to change it to, you're going to prohibit it, but put a noise limit on it? Is that what you like?
Allow it.
Allow it.
And the way that, the recommendation from the, is that it's no music at all?
Yeah. I'm changing that.
Okay, so you'd like to change?
Yes.
What about the time opening for the parking places?
The opening time at five?
Opening at five, from five to two.
Yeah, that's, you're not changing. You just change your number nine.
Just number nine, that's more?
Just number nine.
Just number nine.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Salapas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Just to clarify, I personally would love to see a lounge like Bear Hug in Laredo, although I think this specific location I don't agree with, so that is why I'm voting against it.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item 6B, amending the zoning ordinance map to Cielo Rado... Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on lot one, block one, Winfield Commercial Subdivision Phase 12 and 13, located at 3402 East Delmar Boulevard, Suite 100 and Suite 110, an outdoor patio only, 4,131 square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Kilim Development LTD as the owner, Gastro Group as the applicant, and Adiv Nami as applicant. Property location is lot one, block one, Winfield Commercial Subdivision Phase 12 and 13, located at 3402 East Delmar Boulevard, Suite 100 and 110, and the outdoor patio only of 4,131 square feet. Zone change request is for a special use permit. The proposed use is a restaurant serving alcohol. Letters sent are 21, and we have none for and none against. Background information, on June 15, 2016, city council made a motion to approve of a, of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol, which was Anis Kitchen and Market Restaurant, located at 3402 Delmar Boulevard, which was Suite 220. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the SUP, and staff did not support the application. On June 15, 2016, city council made a motion to approve of a SUP for a restaurant serving alcohol, which was Tatoria Mia Restaurant, located at 3402 Delmar Boulevard, Suite 100. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the SUP, and staff did not support the application. On June 15, 2016, city council made a motion to approve of an SUP for a restaurant serving alcohol, which was Sushi Madre, located at 3402 Delmar Boulevard. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for the SUP, and staff did not support the application. On September 3, 2019, city council made a motion to approve of an SUP for a restaurant serving alcohol, which is La Republi, La Republi, La República, located at 3402 Delmar Boulevard. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the SUP, and staff did not support the application. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. The measurement map. Zoning map. Future land use map. And the recommendation, the staff does not support. The continuation. And both motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Adiv Nami. I'm the owner of Noble Steak and Oyster Restaurant at 3401 Delmar, Suite 100. I, we decided to make this restaurant there because there was an existing restaurant that exactly did what we want to do right now in a better way. It's a, we're planning on doing an extremely luxurious restaurant. And we don't have the means of making any noise or putting loud music. We're not a bar. We're not, we don't even, our, our lease with Kilim Development even says and states that we can't do that. So it's not a nightclub. It can't turn into a nightclub. Yes, we wanna have our patrons there till eight. We have a big space inside. We have a patio as well. We built already, not a seven-foot wall like they state in the condition. It's all the way up. It's around 30, 20, 27 feet. It's not covered completely because there's a gate, but that helps a lot. The conditions state that there can't be any speakers in the patio. There's already speakers from the past restaurants that are still there because they, they used their ready. So again, now all I'm asking is to accept something that already existed. We're not planning on having any, any type of disturbances more than having an awesome dinner or awesome lunch. That's it for me.
Are there any questions, Steph?
I just want to state, I wasn't, I wasn't that vocal on the one before because I knew the situation because of the school and because it didn't, it was more like a bar than a restaurant with, with serving alcohol. I strictly agree if there's other restaurants that are serving alcohol, why won't we support it as well, right? Like you sta, you're stating there's, there was one before, right? And it's not only a bar, so it's a restaurant bar. And I just wanted to clarify why I didn't speak on the other one because everybody was speaking and we were doing the same thing. But as Mr. Realmara stated, like in this plaza, there's also Sushi Madre, La República, and this one was the Italian one, right?
Correct.
Tatoria Mia, I think, was called. And, and they did have, it was a family ambiance, you know, dinner, wine, beer, alcohol, or whatever. So if there's some others, you know, in the same plaza, and I know what the staff is con, concerns is that the school is in front, the house is in the back, right? But as Ms. Portillo stated at the last item was, Laredo is growing, you know, and we need other places to go and, and to eat. And we, and we love that you guys are investing for us, the community.
I have a question for the applicant. Other than the outdoor music, do you agree with all the other comments?
No, just the, the timing of the opening and closing. We want to serve, obviously, we're gonna serve a type of breakfast and brunch. So we need a little bit more time. And at the end, maybe we have ceremonies or they rent out. We've built a special room in the back that's closed. We wanna be able to open till close, la, la, sorry, till, till late. If it's possible 2:00 AM, not, we're gonna serve food the whole time. Like there's no thing like, oh, now it's turning into a bar or, or, no. We have a full menu for the whole time.
And your kitchen will be closing that?
No, we won't close. When, when the, when the restaurant closes, the kitchen closes and the bar closes and everything closes. No, I'm not saying that we're opening till two every day or the weekends. I'm just saying that we, we want to keep it at 12. The thing is that we will have a, a, a special event, and they want to stay there. We want to be able to, to accommodate that.
So specifically, you would prefer midnight for all the days?
For closing, yes. But again, I, 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 it's not that we're, I'm not gonna come back and ask for permission if it's gonna be open till two if we have something, a special event.
To be clear, those hours of operation were transmitted to us by them. They, they.
I noticed in the letter.
In their narrative.
Could you tell us the, the hours of operation of the neighboring restaurant?
For the neighboring restaurants? We have, let's see.
La República? At las dos, no?
They, they close at two, sorry, the weekends.
Thirty-seven.
That's right.
República is.
Until two.
Four PM to 11:00 PM. Tuesday through Friday is 12:00 PM noon to 11:00 PM. Saturday, 10:00 AM to 11:30. Sunday, 10:00 AM to 11:00.
None of them have anything past 11:00?
No, they, they have, they haven't.
Sushi Madre is Monday through Wednesday, 11:00 AM to 10:00. Thursday through Saturday is 11:00 AM to 11:00. And then Sunday is 12:00 PM to 10:00.
So no, no one's open past 11?
Yes, it is open passing though.
Until two. We tried to ask for an open record because we wanted to base ourselves on that because I did see the website and it does say.
Your name, your name for the record.
Oh, you have.
Danny Lopez, I'm sorry.
You have to speak to them, I expect.
Yes, we were looking at that because of, sorry, the open record, Commissioner Danny Lopez.
That's the latest.
I'm here. But that definitely, that's what we're based on because of the hours of operation. The ones that are existing. I definitely know that sometimes I've been, I sat in the commission and with the lack of, we had, it was unfortunate. So I was gonna really jump the gun if, if they were actually opening at two because I've been in that seat too, and we always have to complete some enforcement. There's not really much enforcement by the part of the city because there's a lot of people operating. And we're definitely, we all take the hit when someone else is not complying by the conditions because there's a certain amount of SUPs. And as a restaurateur, this, this ordinance has been changed, I think, I don't know if maybe Dito was back in the, or, or, city council, where they actually changed that D3, the whole SUPs, because of the same issues. But this is gonna be operated as a full restaurant, dining, full luxury restaurant. And right now, we want to open it, definitely see if actually, we wanted to see an open record. We wanted to ask if Republica actually has the condition of being open till two in the morning.
The, the hours of operation in their website only says 12:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Only Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
On the Facebook?
On the Facebook page.
This, this chairman, there appears to be conflicting information. One website it says until two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
The other one says it's, what, one o'clock?
Are, are the SUP, are those open records or do we have to request? I mean, we're not trying to definitely base ourselves on that, but I mean, that's what we wanted to know.
I guess if you can just state which hours you want to operate in the venue, we can, we can definitely.
That's also certain, that goes on the recommendation, the conditions that you all put in the SUP.
I think it would be Saturday and Sunday, 2:00 AM as well.
Oh, you, you might.
And again, the thing is that it's closing time, but by the time they finish their drinks and all of that, and I don't want to go through, through, for you guys to go through this with another restaurant we want opens and, hey, they're open till two or one or whatever.
Because the licensing for TABC is gonna give you a two, obviously, they're not gonna tell you all. It's gonna be a late permit. Eat all seven days a week.
After 12, it's a late permit.
That's just courtesy of the, of the proprietor of the business. TABC is gonna let you, Monday or, they're gonna let you operate with an eight-hours per, with an eight-hours condition once you give us the authority with the SUP because of TABC will ask if you actually have the permission. Obviously, it's just the commission of mornings, it's a protocol.
So there's, this would be, just to clarify, would be Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Yes.
Two o'clock?
One.
Two o'clock.
So for me, so from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM?
Yes, on, 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 for the weekend, Thursday, Friday.
And. And, and from.
Sunday through Thursday?
From Monday, sí, Sunday through Thursday would be 11:00, people brunch until 11:00.
Are there any other questions for the applicant or for Steph?
Question for Steph, for staff. I'll just add a question. The, technically, if they open at 11, they have enough parking spaces or they do not have enough parking spaces?
No, no, they, they're shy of, the, the location is shy by 23 spaces.
By twenty, regardless of what time they open, 11:00 or?
Yes, I want to say yes, if that was included in our calculations, yes.
And the other restaurants, the shops and the restaurants. And for the applicant, are you okay that we, one, we're gonna have specifically those hours to 1:00 of operation? The restriction to outdoor music, because you said you're not complaining outdoor music, so we're gonna put the restriction in here.
No, no, we are playing outdoor music.
You do want outdoor music.
You already have to speak.
And that's why we built the wall as well. But again, it's, it's not gonna be a bar music. Like it's just so you won't hear the chitter chatter or people only talking outside. Yeah.
Similar to 55.
And, and for example, we, we, we're, we're gonna have a, a guy playing the saxophone. You know, so that's if that can see the music inside and outside.
And somebody plays the saxophone.
I think then again, the decibels. The limit of decibels should apply only because it's a neighborhood.
We don't have a problem with that.
So tell me again, the hours of operations that you want from Sunday?
Eleven to one, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then the rest of the days, 11 to 11.
Eleven to 11.
Sunday to Wednesday, 11 to 11? No. Thursday, Friday, Saturday to one?
To one.
So we can put that in as.
And then the condition that's there that says to build a whole wall, for the whole thing, that, that too, like we did build a wall for the, for the houses, not for the whole patio.
Yeah, yeah, you only have residents behind.
Correct. I believe the condition says that it has to be the whole wall. And then on the back of, of, for the houses, there's a gate there that I can't construct the wall. But again, wall or no wall, I believe that, that's not gonna be an issue with the music.
Yeah.
Yeah. I brought pictures of patio and everything, so you could see there's no way either to dance or stand up and, you know, it's tables.
Oh, but I think you're gonna be okay because the comment states a fence or wall along anything that's adjacent to residence. So I think you're good with what's there now.
Yes, so then we're gonna strike item from.
I think we should.
Strike it in and revise it as we did for the other application with a, a restriction to no more than 55 decibels.
Correct. Thank you.
I have a question for.
For the applicant? Okay, thank you.
I'm conflicted 55, yeah.
Yeah, question.
Question for staff. If the applicant had initially put in a closing time of, time of 1:00 AM on Fridays and Saturdays, would staff be in support of that?
Yeah, we would, I think we typically go with their preferred hours of operation unless, I know we've looked at in the past restaurants, you know, usually families. I'm thinking restaurant is family environments. If I'm gonna go with my children, you know, we all know what restaurants are, you know? And I'm typically not at a restaurant at 1:30 in the morning. So that's what we've in the past looked at, maybe typical restaurant hours, which are 11:00. But, you know, to answer your question, no, we would have, we would have been fine with it, you know?
Mr. Chairman, I agree. I'm, I'm usually not at a restaurant at that hour unless I'm coming for a bar.
Or a concert, or a concert.
But to be clear, they transmitted those hours to us. That, that was part of their narrative. They stipulated that those were their preferred hours of operation.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak against this item? If not, if there's no any questions or what sort of action the commission like to take?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing, approve, approve public hearing and go against staff's recommendation and approve the item with the following amendment. So comment number three would be amended to Sunday to Thursday, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And Friday to Saturday, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM. And then comment number 10 would be amended to restrict outdoor music and speakers to a level of 55 decibels, which is in agreement with our local nu, noise ordinance. And, yeah, that's it.
I thought they wanted to stay up until one on Thursday.
Oh. Oh, sorry.
Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so my, my, to comment number three, amending that would be Sunday to Wednesday, 11 to 11:00, and Thursday to Saturday, 11 to 1:00 AM.
That's correct.
And I'll, I'll second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Portillo and a second by Commissioner Salpas with amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries?
Chairman, just for the record, the school district was present. They made no objection. Just for the record.
Which is, this is a restaurant, not a bar.
This is a restaurant.
No, the school district was not here.
Moving on to item six C. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on lots 10, 11 and 12, block 891, Eastern Division, located at 1618 and 1620 Chihuahua Street, 3,399 square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Richard Geiser as the owner. We have Marco Sures as the applicant representative. Property location is lots 10, 11 and 12, block 891, Eastern Division, located at 1618 and 1620 Chihuahua Street, and it's 3,399 square feet. Zone change request is a special use permit. Proposed use is a restaurant serving alcohol. Letter sent is 22, and we have none for, none against. So background, on February 3, 2014, city council made a motion to approve of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the SUP, and staff did not support the application. On February 1, 2021, city council made a motion to approve a SUP for a restaurant serving alcohol. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the SUP, and staff supported the application. However, staff identified concerns regarding overfill parking. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zone change signage? Measurements map? Zoning map?
Channel location.
Future land use map?
Not channel, but it's channel.
And our recommendation is staff does not support. Continuation? And the proposed motion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item, please come forward.
Good afternoon, members of the planning zoning commission, uh, my name's Rick Solis, I'm here with my brother, Mark Solis, I'm just here to give a quick synopsis of this, um. Uh, so this is a barbecue restaurant, um, it's been open since September of twenty twenty-three, they went through the new building application process and have their certificate of occupancy. Uh, he's applying for this uh, beer and wine license, uh, because he's been getting a lot of requests from his customers about when are you serving, do you serve beer, and he always says no. Um, I do wanna state that, and my brother can speak more to this, but um, you know, he's a school teacher at Heights Elementary, he's been there for twenty-two years. Uh, it was always his dream to open a barbecue restaurant, and when he was looking for locations, he wanted to, he sort of has been working in this area for for pretty many years and wanted to. Find a place where he can start his restaurant business. Um, we we asked that the the planning zoning commission consider approving this. Uh, based on the fact that uh, there is restaurants nearby that serve beer already, like the Pizza Hut, which is a block away. And then uh, secondly to that, uh, as was mentioned before, there was two existing SUPs on this location, I think one was Chanos. And then the second one was another restaurant, Luna, something that really wasn't open for very long, but. Uh, there's precedent for this location, um, there weren't any complaints beforehand uh, with regards to that, so. Um, I'll let my brother speak a little bit more about why he wants to do this.
Good evening, guys, uh, I'm Mark Solis, uh, so the entire idea for my restaurant came about because I used to play in bands and that's how I found Chanos. Uh, so I, like my brother mentioned, I've been a teacher for twenty-two years, six years prior to that, I was a cook. And so for those entire six years, I went to, that's how I put myself in college, but I always wanted to come back to it. The name of the restaurant is called Low Point Barbecue, and the reason it's called that is because during the pandemic, I ended up getting COVID. And just like everybody else, everybody thought you were gonna die, you're gonna get sick, you're never gonna be the same again, and as I laid on my bed, thinking I was gonna die, I, it. Hit me that I'm never gonna open my restaurant, so it took me to get to my lowest point to open the place. So that being said, uh, being in bands, I had the luxury of being able to play in Houston, Dallas, Austin, all over Texas, and I visited a myriad amount of. The are which are breweries and barbecue joints, and so I, when I decided to do this, I wanted to bring those experiences back to Laredo. So uh, my idea was not so much the alcohol, but the barbecue, and I don't know if you saw on the sign, I mean, we've been selling out. Um, the idea again is to be be able to put Laredo on the map, there's a top fifty in Texas, my goal is to be one of those. Um, we're getting there, you know, we're selling out, Laredo can be Laredo, and people show up and they buy it and they tell us good things, so we're hoping that. Extends beyond us, like my brother said, they are asking if we do sell beer. Mind you, that is secondary to what I personally wanna choose, uh, we currently close at ten, I would like it if we could close a little later. Um, just because as people are eating, people are talking, so they stay a little longer, uh, we do offer B Y O B for right now, and that's what we've noticed. That as they're eating, they talk, they eat a little more, they drink, they talk, they eat, and then they leave. Uh, so the extended time that they're there kind of allows us to sell them more food. Um, but beyond that, uh, yeah, we don't plan on staying open late, I wanna get home, I've been there since five in the morning and I leave at eleven at night, no, I'm tired. Uh, so yeah, no, it's not a bar, not a not a club or anything like that. Going back to the sound part, uh, I am in or currently not, but I used to play in bands. Um, I would like to be able to have, you know, a speaker out there, uh, cause I think on one of those uh, recommendations, it says no, no music or anything like that. Um, I would, I mean, I currently play music for my customers, period, eh, once in a blue moon, I'll have someone go out there and they'll play on a guitar and they're just, it's background music, it's not like bands blasting anything. Uh, I am in the middle of two actual buildings, so technically, there's no residences currently bumped up against me. Uh, you can barely hear the music out into the parking lot, let me put it that way. Um, but other than that, guys, uh, I guess that's my story.
So what what hours of operations do you, would you, would you like?
Uh, so right now, we're eleven to ten, I would like eleven to twelve.
But that's what's on the condition that they would give. It says Thursday through Saturday from eleven A M to twelve A M, and then it says on Sunday from eleven A M to five P M.
Yeah.
Would you be okay with that?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
But you would like to be able to have music?
Yes.
One of the conditions again, and I guess we could do the same thing we done for the other ones, keep it at the fifty-five if we so choose. Are there any questions for the applicant? I guess the second thing was, I guess, if they're concerned with the, with the the overflow parking, it's that something.
So I guess from from that standpoint, I mean, obviously, the building department went and gave us the C O S, so obviously, felt our parking was adequate, I would also say that, um. The previous restaurants were there and there was really no issue with parking at that point, um, obviously, if if it becomes an issue, it's something that we can revisit.
I remember going to Chanos and there was always iffy, Eddie parking there, hit the door, who don't run out first, the parking spot's on a brisket, so. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
This is a public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak against this item? If not, what sort of action the commission like to take? I can motion to close the public hearing and to go against staff recommendation and uh, approve the conditional use permit. Uh, do you wanna make a? Oh, yeah, with the, well, the hours are there, but yeah, to strike number twelve and and we've done the pass a lot of music subject to the decibel levels that are listed in the code. To the motion by Commissioner, I have a second by Commissioner Portillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries? We're now moving on.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just a bit of clarification, I did wanna just make sure to mention that. But with regard to the conditions um, associated with the zoning, it's a bit different than platting. When the commission votes to strike out those comments, they're circled. When there, the recommendation, we will transmit the commission's recommendation with regard to those conditions, however, our recommendations will remain unchanged. Just to make sure that everybody is aware, that that is a slight difference between platting and zoning. Okay?
But you're not poking this in the eye, right?
I'm sorry?
You're not poking this in the eye with it?
No, 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 absolutely not.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you. Uh, we're now moving on to consideration of the following preliminary plats and preliminary replats. I do have um, an email correspondence asking for item seven A, engineer required, requested to table item, is that time certain? Or is it?
Time uncertain.
Time uncertain. Time certain.
Put uh, put a order, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Had the wrong tools of order, when you table an item, it can't come back unless there's a significant change in the information required. So the correct motion would be to postpone to intervene.
We talked about that last day.
So, I mean, I went back and read it again, and and it. The motion would be to postpone that.
The attorney before him was actually told it that.
But that could be a motion to postpone.
Yeah, motion to postpone rather than the table, cause if you table it, then it it should not come back unless there's a significant amount of change in the information available, or. Someone who was not present for that can bring that back or postpone. Or the or the proceeding, the the, I'm sorry, the side that uh, has motion to table brings it back.
So engineers requesting to postpone?
Postpone, yeah, the item.
It, are you gonna?
I postpone A and D.
A, C and D?
So so I do have three requests um, for items seven A, seven C and seven D to postpone by request of engineer. Time certain?
Time certain.
Uh, the first one was time uncertain and the C and D word time certain.
So then let's do those individually, then we have to do those individually, okay, so let's go back to. Item seven A, postpone time uncertain, do I have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Got a second, Commissioner Ramirez, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries? And now, uh, we have a request to postpone time certain, item seven C and seven D. Second.
Second, discussion of what time?
Wait, for the next B.
For the next B.
My second. So we have a motion by. Who is it, I'm sorry?
Me.
Oh, okay, second. Second by Commissioner Ramirez, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries? Moving on to item seven B. Preliminary consideration of the replat of lot forty-eight, block two, San Isidro Northeast subdivision, phase eleven into lot forty-eight A and forty-eight B, block two, San Isidro Northeast subdivision, phase eleven, the tent is commercial.
For the record, um, applicant is San Isidro Northeast, engineer is Slay Engineering Company, proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this two lot development is B one. Location view? Aerial view? The current plot and the proposed replat? Comments from planning? Traffic safety? And the proposed motion?
Thank you, engineer?
Good afternoon, my name is Ramiro Barra, I work for Slay Engineering, and I'm here representing my clients on the zero management, and we concur with the comments, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Sort of action the commission like to take?
Oh, sorry, quick question for the staff. Um, this is commer, this, the intent is commercial here, right, but how come one of the comments says if it's gonna be used for multifamily, does that mean multifamily like as a?
So that's why I'm all provided with a background on that, so what we do have that happens sometimes is that, so the zoning is only one, right?
And that does allow business uses, but it also does allow multifamily, sometimes the applicant or the developer. Uh, has an inclination, an inclination of wanting to potentially do multifamily, but in the application, they don't always state that. Now, the reason it's here and it's tied with the comment of coordinate with utilities, so if you have a business use, let's say restaurant or retail compared to multifamily. The demand of the water and source system, it's a, it's a big difference, so that's why we just wanna make sure that if the intent is to go. Uh, multifamily, that that is stated upfront, so make it make sure that the utilities department does plan for that, that's that's just, that's why that's there. Listen, thank you. Are there any other questions for staff or the engineer? If not, what sort of action the commission like to take?
Uh, motion to approve subject to comments.
Second.
A motion, a second by Commissioner Salpas, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries? Moving on to item seven E, preliminary consideration of the plat of Lago del Valle, phase nine, the tent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Agave Investments, engineer is Pau Consulting, proposed use is residential. And the zoning for this ninety-three lot development is R one and R one A. Location view? Aerial view? The proposed plat, comments from planning? Traffic safety and the proposed motion?
Thank you.
For Q and A, we pay up consulting, uh, we concur with all the comments, and I'm here to answer your question that you may have.
Are there any questions, engineer? Thank you. I make a motion that we approve subject to the comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries? Who was the second by, I'm sorry? Commission Salpas, okay. We're now moving on to consideration of following final plats and final replats. If there's no objection from staff or from commission um, to hear items eight A through eight D. I make a motion that we read item eight A through eight D. You have a motion, a second by Commissioner Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries? Um, can we now have a motion? Make action to approve items eight A through eight D?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, can we now read those into record?
Uh, yes, for the record, uh, final consideration of the plat of Palm Lake subdivision phase two, approved. Final consideration of the plat of lot three, block two, Alexander some, uh, commercial subdivision phase fifteen, approved. Consideration of plat of lot one, block one, Alexander some divi, commercial subdivision phase thirteen, approved. Final consideration of plat of I, B, uh, B Boomtown, approved. This is the final.
Okay, now moving on to reconsideration of following following final plats and final replats, if there's no objection, can we also uh, just have a. Action on items, on item nine A? If there's no objection, it's an approval. What the question? So I want some make a motion for approval, for nine A. Make a motion to approve on nine A. So we have a motion, Commissioner on hand, a second, Commissioner Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, we'd like to read that one into record.
Yes, uh, final reconsideration of the plat of A S K G Columbia Industrial Park, uh, approved.
Now moving on to consideration of extension of the following final plats and final, wait now. Motion to approve ten A and eleven A, oh, ten A. Ten A? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries?
Yes, uh, consideration of a six-month extension to the final plat approval of Lago del Valle subdivision phase ten, approved.
And um, next one is consideration of model subdivision compliance. Eleven A consideration of model rule subdivision compliance for the plat of Los Pleasantas East, phase three, the tent is residential. That's also. Action of approval, do you wanna make a motion on that? Motion to to approve eleven A.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Salpas, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, um, any directors comments?
I'm almost prepared this time for her. I guess I did wanna mention, we we had a town hall meeting just recently on Del Mar, on the zoning district overlay, and we came, we uh, came back to. We gave a final presentation on the overlay to council at the last council meeting, and um, council has decided that it may not be the right time. For the ordinance, but we will definitely have it in our hip pocket and, you know, we'll continue to monitor and track that location, and if and when. It seems like there's more interest in it, we'll bring it back, but that that was pretty much the termination of that project.
I have a question, were the residents aware that that, uh, cause I know that the ownership of those homes has changed over the years. From when I was on council and prior to that, you know, Council of Gera, that they basically are sitting on city property, that the, you know, right of way extends like twenty feet into their yards.
Yes, there was a lot of discussion on that, and they, that was one of their very big concerns, that this study was gonna preface. The widening and the taking of of that land, and we had a lot of discussion to assure them that that was not the intention of this study, that it was more focused on uses.
Correct, and but but again, it's not a taking, it's it's city's right of way, I mean, that's a.
They, there was all, they were all over the map, so people understood that it was already city right of way, some people were thinking, oh, you know, they're gonna take our property, so we had a lot of discussion about that, but we had to. Sort of try to refocus that this is, had really nothing to do with that, that we were looking at just. How how were we gonna plan for the future of this corridor, how is it gonna transition, um, how can we control that so that that transition happens? In a way that isn't as painful as maybe we've seen in the recent past.
Agreed, um, Mr. Chairman, as if I can, just using my platform to uh, invite everyone to Vision Zero's uh, interactive workshop for Safe Streets for All. Uh, Tuesday the twenty-third at the Joe Gavra Public Library, there's going to be a uh, an event from four to seven, it'll be interactive, there'll be a lot of stations, there'll be surveys you can take, some uh. Some stations for the kids as well, an opportunity to make comments of our uh, our roads and the safety of our roads for the future. Thank you. And speaking of safety, um, is there any way to possibly contact techs off to see how the their projects for Loop Twenty and the overpasses, to see how that's gonna look and project?
Uh. Did you want a presentation?
Yeah, a presentation, just to kind of foresee what it's gonna look like and how it's gonna affect development, cause I know we have a lot of stuff going around.
We can certainly transmit your desire to them, you know, and, you know, work with them to bring that forward.
Alright, thank you, um, if you know the comments, questions, can we have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.